I'd like to call to order the Sagittuck City Council meeting for Monday, January 8th. If you could all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Jamie, we could have a roll call.
Anderson, here Baldwin, Dean, Gardner, Muncie, Stanton, White.
All right, as far as Mayor's comments tonight, I want this meeting to be as efficient as possible. I will do my best. I know there is a football game that a lot of people would like to attend. So a lot of the items that are on the agenda tonight, we did have, we discussed a lot at the workshop meeting, but we'll take as much time as needed. I did want to congratulate April Gundy and the Convention and Visitors Bureau for hiring April to be in charge of special events in town. I really appreciate the Convention and Visitors Bureau being willing to take that on. And for April, she's going to be a great person to do that. It's going to be great for all of us in council because we have a point person now to go to when it comes to special events. And then also tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at the Sagittuck Township Hall, there is going to be a Community Safety Coalition meeting. If you haven't attended one of those, it would be great if you could attend. It's at 6 o'clock at the Township Hall. They'll be talking about be smart gun safety and storage as well as efforts to get a school safety resource officer. So they'll be talking about that tomorrow night. It's just an informational meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. City manager comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Likewise, I want to keep this very efficient. So my comments are in page 11 of this packet. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Ryan at this point?
Madam Mayor, good evening, everybody. I don't have a question, just more of a comment on a situation that was brought to the mayor manager's attention today. House member White and I did a brief tour of the airport property on Saturday, and we noticed some blazes that had been put on trails out there. And you spotted-
Sorry, what did you say again? Some?
Blazes, trail markers.
Blazes, okay.
Put on trees out at the airport property. My understanding is from the response I received is that it was not authorized by the city. We do not have a policy against removing those, but I think those should be removed because it then presumes that the city is taking responsibility for maintenance as well as access to those trails.
Is there anything you want to say in regards to that?
Thank you.
Anybody else with any questions?
Well, my question is, what is going to be done with that?
Hey you, so my response to you, Mr. Gardner, earlier today, Madam Mayor, if you'd like to entertain this.
Go ahead.
Was... Well, very happy that you and Mr. White got to stomp around on the airport property trails. Ms. Baldwin and I, Scott Herbert, and the attorney, Mr. Whitty, saw those markers as well. It appears to be organic signage, which is kind of like pop-up signage, right? That happens. If you think about this, like Crow's Nest, right? See lots of signs that just kind of pop up organically and showing people where to go. Those exist. Willem Trail, John Willem Trail, same. So we see these from time to time. And I too, you know, I don't appreciate those. Well, as the administrator, I don't appreciate those signs just kind of popping up, right? Definitely should be run through city administration, if not through city council. But if the council wants to remove these little markers that are on the airport property, you should also consider what you do for one, you should do for all. So then it becomes a little more complex or less complex. Either you let organic signs pop up and kind of let those things slide and/or start removing things, which would guess that would cause concerns in other areas. But so it's a kind of a policy decision, like-
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, I did see those two, and I don't know who put those there. They are, they're small little signs, and they're kind of like on every whatever quarter mile or whatever. So they're up there like the way it looks. Before, and I don't know who put those up there, and we were surprised by it too. And as Chair of the PPW Committee, we do want to get some wayfinding, good wayfinding and all of that. I do not think it's a huge issue. I would like to say that before those were there and before we were actually walking on the airport property, which you would find littered throughout the airport property, would be deer blinds. And I never heard anything about deer blinds being a huge issue for anybody. So I mean, I think that we can pick and pick and pick about our pet peeves, or we can just keep moving forward and try not to obstruct on small matters. It's of course, don't approve of it. I don't know who did it. I wish they would not do that. We are going to get signage at any park, and we are working hard to do that. We have a committee for that, and we have a city staff, and we have a way of doing that. But I don't think it rises to the level that we're interrupting a meeting for that. Thank you.
Gregory?
Because I'm curious, what kind of harm does that cause? I'm just curious. You're right, it's illegal, shouldn't be done. But what is the harm that it causes?
Madam Mayor, if I can answer that question from my perspective, the airport property is not a park. It's not public access. Putting a sign up presumes that the city is, if someone goes out there and happens to walk in and see signs, they may think that the city is maintaining the trails and takes some responsibility for the maintenance of the area. The city is not in the position to maintain that area at this point.
So if I could, if we can have the PPW discuss this, and then we'll let them take it from there. And then we can work on whether, you know, these are illegal and what we should do about it. But we'll do that at a PPW meeting.
Sounds great. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, as far as agenda changes, I do want to be able to remove item 15C from the agenda. As you guys remember from the workshop, that was something in closed session. So if I could have a motion to remove item 15C from the agenda?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to remove item 15C in new business, Dune Ridge update.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? All right, any guest speakers tonight, Jamie? Okay, now on to public comment on agenda items only. Anyone in the room would love to speak on agenda items only? All right, no one in the room, then anybody online? Anyone online, if you'd like to raise your hand for agenda items only, Tim Dykema. Go ahead. And you, just a reminder, you do have three minutes, Mr. Dykema.
Sounds good. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I just wanted to jump on real quick.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dykema, if you could just state your name and where you live.
Yeah, yeah, I will. I spend my summers in Sagittuck. I own a home there. And my name is Tim Dykema. Have owned property in Sagittuck or Douglas since 1994. I wanted to talk about the AT&amp;T contract that's on the agenda for tonight. Specifically, there's a couple of areas that really concern me. I know the Mount Bald Head radon quite well. I was the first wireless provider in the city to provide a non-line-of-sight internet signal off of Mount Bald Head. I've spent hours and hours inside of that ball, and I know the radio propagation of it and all that. So something that concerns me, number one, is I don't like the idea that we're looking at creating a contract with one cellular provider that excludes all others. And I understand why it excludes all others. That ball is only big enough for one provider, and that's understandable. But it's the provisions that AT&amp;T has placed in this contract that concerns me the most. And the one, it starts in section two and permitted use where they define a surrounding property. And I want to make sure that all of you understand that surrounding property means any contiguous property of which the city of Sagittuck has four of them, one to the north, one to the west, two of them along Perryman, and it actually includes the museum. And when they state that they don't want you to have any physical obstruction of their wireless signal, what you're doing is telling them that we agree we will never alter our water tank property. We'll never alter the water tank, expand it. We'll never alter anything at Oval Beach in terms of the bathrooms or the concessions. Anything that you do that physically changes anything physically obstructs the signal. I mean, take your cell phone off the desk and stick it under the table. You've just obstructed your signal. You might even notice the bar goes down one notch. So I want you to understand that that idea of them putting in surrounding, that idea of the surrounding contiguous area is a construct that there's really no good reason for it. It's put in there during the, they put it in there under the section on installation so they can access the site during installation. But what it does then later in the section eight is that it restricts you and it restricts the city in what we can do. And it restricts primarily the ability to have competing carriers. I've copied all of you on my comments. I hope you'll read them via your emails that were on the website. Thank you so much.
All right, Tim, thanks so much. Anyone else online who would like to speak on agenda items only? All right, if there's no one else, moving on to item number nine, the consent agenda. I just need a motion to approve those from the meeting minutes from December 11th to 20th in the meeting on the strategic planning on the 20th.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'll second.
Great, you have the second. Any discussion? All right, Jamie, this is a roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
All right, we're on to staff reports, city manager.
All good.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I have one question for the city manager. What is the date and time of the MML presentation that was in your report?
Uh, MME?
I'm sorry. Or MME, excuse me.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't see it listed.
It sounds like February, let me follow up with-
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that's open to anybody who would like to join?
Well, no, not exactly.
It's a curious, I mean, it's an interesting topic to me, so I just thought there might be others.
A state conference, and happy to follow up with the details.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for the city manager's report? Any questions? All right, on to the treasurer's report. Peter, is he online? Hi.
No.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, I appreciate it. Planning and zoning. All right, Department of Public Works, anything you want to add? Go ahead, Scott.
Madam Mayor, you may have noticed if you've been through town today, we were a little busy today at work. Village Square Playground is gone. So-
Wow.
It's an construction site officially, and so, well, I think later on this week that we're going to have a banner that says coming soon with an image of, hopefully if it gets approved tonight, you know, of an image so people can know what to expect come the spring. But we're very eager to get that project underway and across the finish line. So it was a lot, it actually went a lot faster taking down than we thought. I planned for it a whole week, and it was one day, so-
Just one day?
One day.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. It was, it was, it was nice for it to go that way.
Good, go ahead, Scott.
Well, not only did they do that, but I took out a Christmas tree, and about five minutes later, it was in the back of Scott's pickup truck being whisked away to a new home. And I just, you know, if you want to talk about service in this town, I mean-
It's something.
It was like, I can't believe it. I mean, it was just instant. It was instantaneous.
Wonderful.
It was just a few miles of crawl, you know, we can provide that level of service.
They look for opportunities constantly. They never miss a trip without grabbing something, so kudos to the team.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for being here this evening. Excellent detailed report. Reading through your meetings, a couple of things. One, I wanted to ask a couple of questions. One is your DPW weekly goals meetings. That's great. I think that's a wonderful meeting with your, with your team. Can you tell us a little bit more about what's discussed at those meetings?
Yeah, sure. That's something that I think I implemented probably about a year ago. And really, it does a few things for us. One, it, you know, is, I have a whole team of people, a small team of people. And as we're out and about, you know, we all kind of come up with our own priorities, and we may not even communicate those priorities with one another. So one thing that the, you know, every, we call it a Monday meeting or weekly goals meeting. We get together first thing at the beginning of the week. We all kind of hash out what our individual priorities are, and we rank them on most importance. And then we, we put it on a list. And that way, we're all kind of aware of what the other people are thinking, what we're all seeing out there. We try to create a culture where we're not just simply driving through town, you know, with tunnel vision, but really empowering the staff to open their eyes and have wide peripheral vision and see what's before them. So that's one thing that that meeting does. It also is an opportunity for anyone just to bring up anything in general as a staff member. Like, you know, if they've got personal issues, one topic that we talked about was, you know, we, somebody wanted the week of Christmas off. And so that was one thing that we discussed and all agreed upon as a team on how we could tackle that together. And basically, we're going to do it on a rotation basis. So one, so anyway, that's just an example of the type of content that we're, we're kind of talking about as a group. And then, yeah, priorities also, you know, just absolutely anything in general. We schedule things at that time. I think three of us are going to be taking a food safety course for the concessions to hand out at the Oval Beach. I'm one of them. I'm like, well-
That takes a while.
Responsible for it, so let's get certified.
Yeah, it takes a while.
Exactly, it does take a little bit. So we just kind of talk about who's doing what. And, you know, the team that we have up there, we really value lists, you know. Thing, you know, I don't know what the guy, I'm just lucky with the team that we have. But, you know, you can give this group of people a list, and they want to see it crossed off and then from start to finish before they move on to the next task. And that's one thing that, that is really rewarding for everybody. We all kind of know exactly what to do. And then, and more importantly, one more thing, more importantly is we have a Friday follow-up meeting. So how did the week go? Did we accomplish what we set out to accomplish that week? And if we didn't, what were the obstructions in the way that prevented us from achieving those objectives? And then maybe some of those tasks will roll into the next week, and it's just kind of a nice snapshot of how we performed.
Helen, did you have something?
Yeah, honestly, I just wanted to thank Mr. Herbert and his crew. I did drive by to give them a shout out. And it, I mean, I think that they were done on it today because they looked like a bunch of 10-year-olds playing. They were so excited. I think they had a good time. But, yeah, and I, and I do appreciate it. And, I mean, Parks and Public Works is making things happen, and we can't, we can have all the policy ideas and everything that we want, but if we can't execute it, it's not worth anything, and I'm very grateful. Want to thank you.
Another, another little anecdote, Mayor. I happened to see last week, some of Scott's guys out at Wicks Park, they were, they were painting the bathroom at Wicks Park. And then I saw Scott at City Hall, and I mentioned to him, he said, oh, yeah, they're doing that today? Great. You know, which shows to me that, you know, he sets priorities for his team, and he gives them the space to execute. And to me, that's the mark of a good leader, so kudos to you, my friend.
Thank you very much.
Scott, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, I have one other question. Capitol Improvement Meeting, can you tell us a little bit more about that meeting on the 18th?
Sure, yeah. That was just kind of a preliminary meeting. You will hear more about this. John Moxie and I will be presenting an actual recommendation to council in the very near future as we plan for the 2024, 2025 construction season. But I can give you the kind of the, just an idea of what we were kind of thinking about recommending, which some of it was, is already predetermined. We had already had it planned since last year, like citywide crack ceiling. That's going to, it didn't happen in the fall. That will be taking place very early in the spring along with painting all the center lines, the crosswalks, stop bars. That's all going to get contracted out through Ace Parking Lot Striping, most likely, once again. We did get an agreement signed by everybody for Bridge Street Reconstruction. So we're going to be doing a crush and shape, rebuild of Bridge Street. That's about $70,000 for the city, the city's portion of it. Township will pay 30% on that. We've got the Park Street erosion issue that we're all familiar with. That's going to be taking place this spring. And then at the strategic planning meeting, I also lightly discussed the DSMI, which I probably didn't have a lot of information of it at the time, but that's the distribution system materials inventory. And that's something that makes us in compliance with the lead and copper rules set forth by the state. So I think in 2020, we put together a preliminary DSMI inventory. In January of 2025, we have a complete DSMI that's due. So we actually have to take it to the next level and verify the material that each service line in the city is, is made of. And so that's due in January, you know, a year from now. And that's probably $100,000 to $200,000 expenditure for the city, but very important for us to do. But then we also discussed lightly for streets, more street projects, Maple Street from Blue Star Highway to where we started construction towards North Street. That road's in deplorable condition. It needs water main replacement. It's going to be expensive. But it is, it's a major street in the city, and we think that it's due for some overhaul. But, and then on top of that, we've got the playground, and then also some, some City Hall work that we still have to do. We still have to connect the gutters to the storm sewer in front of the building, which I think is going to be around $18,000 for that. And then also kind of planning on presenting around $25-ish thousand, depending on how you all feel about it, worth of landscaping upgrades to the City Hall project. And that will really make this building shine. So we've got a lot, a lot coming at you very soon.
Great, that's great, Scott. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Anyone from the Sheriff's Department here? Nope, okay. John Moxie, what's that?
Sheriff's didn't have anything to report.
Okay, and anyone from engineering, John Moxie? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I do have a question on, even though the engineer's in here, maybe Mr. Herbert can answer this question. So with the north and Maple construction, very nice work. The water is, is staying below the road. Are we going to continue to see the standing water next to the road there? I mean, I'm assuming there's culverts in there that are letting the water flow through. So is that the expected end result to see the water that's going to be, even though the road's been raised, the water's still there?
Yeah, that's, that's about, I mean, it's the seasonality of it too. Like in July, I wouldn't expect it to be, you know, that saturated. But given the time of year with the overcast skies and the precipitation that we've had, that's, that's probably about what you can expect. But the good news is that before that-
Right.
You would see water completely over the road at that point. So this is a huge win. And then also too, I think at some point to really fix the, fix the problem at that intersection, it's going to take more of a big picture look at the whole area between that intersection and the Peterson Nature Preserve. It's a lot of saturated ground that at some point, I personally think it might be worth exploring with the Algon County Drain Commission.
Absolutely.
And getting some, some bigger guns in there, take a look at it for us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and on to Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Fire District Administration, Dan?
Thanks very much. With apologies to University of Michigan fans. I too had hoped this would be a brief for fire report. And so I had flipped four visuals that I was going to share with you tonight on the thumb drive. But for whatever administrative reasons that I do not understand, that's been disallowed, so-
Dan, they just came in a little late, so if we could just have those at least three-
Right here, right.
Right, but it takes time to do that, to be able to put it in a slide. So if you can just get them not the day of the meeting, we just need it.
The amount of time it takes to put a thumb drive into the-
All right, but go ahead with your report, if you could.
Now I'm going to have to use more words to explain some messages, and some I'm not going to deal with at all, just because we take too many words. Anyway, this report's on the Fire District Board meeting on the 18th of, of December. And I will stick to four or five topics there. First off, thanks to Logan, you were intended, that one, right? Yes. And we greeted him with a closed session, so then we kicked him out of the room right away. That was a personnel matter. One of the documents I can't share with you this evening, actually two of them, I just received today from the chief. The first of which was the year-end dashboard, so the year-end stats in those eight categories you're used to seeing. The net of which is favorable with incidents down somewhat in large part, according to the chief, related to good weather in December, which reduced incidents, motor vehicle incidents on the roads, which is a primary call for service. So that was a good thing. The other of those two charts dealt with a comparison, year-to-year, three-year comparison on response time trends. And that trend, that's actually more than a trend, this year dropped by a full minute. And that related to a revision pushed by the Fire District with Algon County and with the 911 Board that, without getting into great detail, allows the Fire District to get a heads-up on calls which other, to 911, which otherwise 911 would send first, these primarily EMS calls, to the ambulance service. We now get that call at the same time. So we can dispatch, the Fire District can dispatch EMS, our EMS people, literally a minute earlier. And as anybody who's ever waited for an ambulance knows, a minute's a long time. So that was a positive. Anyway, I've got a chart to show you on that, but it's in my pocket. Also, why was, the other chart I was going to share with you was the 2023's annual grants, total grants to the Fire District, which amounted to $106,000, which is a terrific, terrific number and a terrific year for us. And I have them at some point, we can look at that chart for each individual thing. We also discussed at the district meeting the, the possible acquisition of a traffic, what they call a traffic management apparatus, basically an attenuator truck that looks something like a flatbed truck, but has on the back of it a large kind of spring-loaded device for use on the highway to be the last, if you're coming at an accident, the first vehicle you would encounter. We currently use oftentimes the tanker trucks or whatever. But a car that strikes the tanker truck takes an expensive asset out of service and risks lives or whatever. So anyway, we haven't reached a decision on whether or how to acquire such a truck, but it's, it's, it's a big deal. I don't know, some of you may not go back this far, but one of the fire chiefs, I forget which, was Hastings or wherever, was killed on I-94 from just such an accident. This is, I think, three years ago. People don't, you know, people are doing this, and they're seeing flashing lights and not, can't tell red from orange or whatever. So anyway, that's where we're looking at that. The ambulance study group, which you had asked about separately. We now finally have our meeting scheduled for the 17th of January. This is with an ambulance supplier, provider, ambulance service provider. That meeting was delayed, or not delayed, it was just challenging to try and get people's availabilities, in particular the CEO of that company's availability to have that meeting. So we're thrilled to have, be able to do that and hopefully make significant progress there. And finally, the last thing I was going to, I had on my thing was a little, little, a little, kind of a FYI thing as we've covered some other topics of interest to the Fire District and Fire Service. And this one had to do with, follows up on one I mentioned here before, which is lithium battery fires. There are a bunch of facts here that I don't have in my head. Those fires burn at 2,000 degrees. And I was amazed, this was a report of, out of Alabama of such a fire. It took 36,000 gallons of water to extinguish the fire. Those fires are likely around here, I mean, it's, it's a nightmare if it happens in somebody's garage, truly a nightmare. But it's more likely to happen on the highway, on 196. And if it does, to get 36,000 gallons of water to fight a fire like that out on the highway, we have two tanker trucks. That's all they do is carry water. And what do you want to guess, how many thousand gallons each one holds?
No.
3,000. That's 13 truckloads, round-trip truckloads of water for one vehicle fire. There are a whole host of other risks. The batteries give off toxic gases, the plume of smoke. Because one of the, one of the ways of treating these fires is to just simply let them burn out, which can take hours, which means you've got smoke, you've got a nightmare on a traffic situation because people want to slow down and see what's going on, so you probably have to rewrite. Anyway, I simply alert you to, it's an area that we have a good deal of interest in. Our next Fire District Board meeting, unfortunately, it's ahead of the ambulance meetings, is the 15th of, of January, and you're any and always welcome. And all of our, all of our meetings, agendas, and meeting notes or whatever are available.
All right, Dan, thank you so much. Gregory, do we have anything on the interurban board?
Just that, you know, we're working-
Um, just that, uh, you know, we're working, um, uh, on our, uh, on plans for the building expansion. We should be seeing plans from engineer for, uh, the expansion from our $250,000 grant. Don't have the numbers yet from our, um, you know, New Year's Eve. We had the, all of our numbers have been up as you guys have been hearing. Um, and, uh, but I do, I do want to, uh, point out, and I did mention it at our workshop, um, we lost about very valuable, uh, board member who spent 11 years, um, serving, uh, or, or working for Interurban and, and 29 years on our board. Um, Maria Muha passed away and will be, um, uh, there, there hasn't been talk about any kind of service or, or, um, or wake or anything yet. Um, but I'll let you know if there is. Um, but, uh, we are going to have a little garden for her created, uh, there in front of our bench there at, uh, Interurban. Um, and then we're having these little memory stones, um, cobblestones, and they're going to be engraved with Marie's name around, uh, that area. So we'll keep, we'll, we'll keep her there at Interurban because, uh, she was very valuable to us and she taught me a lot, uh, when I came onto the board there. And, uh, she owned Framing with Friends, another side note, uh, biz, popular business and Weathervein Mall, which is now owned, uh, by Nick Capizzo, uh, from, uh, or Nick, Nick Capaletti from Capizzo Studios. So.
All right, Gregory. Thank you so much. Uh, anything from Kalamazoo Lake Sewer and Water is Berry here online?
No.
No. Okay. Uh, Harbor Authority meets January 23rd. Uh, Zoning Board of Appeals, anyone? Uh, Historic District Commission?
Yeah. Good evening. Uh, we met on Thursday, January 4th. We had, uh, return item under new business, 240 discs, pardon me, 254 Francis's new home. That's a, uh, currently vacant lot at the corner of Holland and Francis. Uh, very good discussion. The, uh, we had the developer, uh, with us at the meeting. He was online to discuss the proposal. There were some changes that were made as a result of conversations that we had at the previous meeting in, um, uh, November, um, some improvements. So we thought it was a really good presentation. They, they made some adjustments again that we had asked, uh, to make this a more, um, in size and mass with the, um, surrounding properties. The interesting part about this is that the entrance to this home is going to be off of elegant, or pardon me, off of Holland Street. And, um, we were looking at the site plan and interestingly enough, if you drive through that intersection, just before you get to the stop sign on Holland heading south, there's a big tree, big oak tree. You probably have seen it, just haven't noticed it. Um, interestingly enough, that's called the treaty oak. And I learned this from the person who owns the home, the brown home at, um, Holland Street, which is just north of the, uh, proposed, um, family dwelling. And it's curious because that home or that tree, I'd never knew it had a name. It's been around ever since I can remember. Apparently back in 1896, um, there's a story behind this. Mary, um, uh, gosh, can't remember her name right off hand now. She wrote Memories of Sagatuck. Apparently she chained herself literally to the tree with a breastfeeding baby because, uh, the city was going to tear that down to make way for a road. And apparently there was back in the day earlier before her time, uh, that there was a tree that was side between at the time would have been Sagatuck, wasn't called Sagatuck at the time, and the natives for, uh, use of the area for, for people. So we found that to be very interesting, but the concern there is that with the driveway, there's some concern that that driveway may impact that tree and, and, um, that's been put on notice just for the developer as well as the property owner, that that's something we'll have to be considered as they look at development. So ultimately we approve the application.
For his people.
Sorry.
Did you say ultimately you approved the application?
The application was approved. Yep.
Okay. All right. Uh, Planning Commission, Holly?
Um, next meeting is on January 18th. Uh, Jake and RC are working on, um, some of the preliminary recommendations, sort of the low hanging fruit. Um, so that's moving along. Uh, and then we can expect the waterfront property, uh, recommendations to come to council soon.
Okay. That sounds great. Uh, Parks and Public Works?
We did not meet in December. We will meet on January 23rd, 10 a.m.
Okay. Uh, Tri-Community Non-Motorized Trail, Scott?
Uh, trying to meet with the friends. It's just been difficult over the holidays to sync up schedules, but keep working on getting together with them.
Okay. Anything with recycling? Not at this time. Uh, request for payment none. Um, on to item 12, approval of accounts payable. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable as presented in the amount of $813,053 and 30 cents.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I've got three items for discussion. One is the 22,945 in holiday lighting. Is that an annual expense? Is that a one time? Just kind of more curiosity if that's a, and I should remember this, but I don't.
A contract that are we, is this our third year of that contract, Ryan?
Yep, that's correct.
That approved that a while ago, right?
Yeah. We have the pleasure of having our treasurer here as well.
Yeah.
But yeah. Is that an expected annual expense?
Contract.
Okay.
Annual contract. Three years. Right?
All right. Uh, you have two and three items. What were the other two or three?
There was an expense for 3,371.23 for a city hall elevator. Um, just kind of curious on that one.
Have you used the elevator, Mr.?
No, actually I'm.
The elevator stopped working. Um, Mrs. Baldwin, the completed Baldwin got stuck in it.
And it came back. Yes.
Some little box about this big in three trips. They finally got it fixed. But that's the first expense I've ever seen in many years besides annual maintenance. So.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
All jokes aside, uh, Mr. Gardner, the, the elevator is super important, not only for AD accessibility, but also because we have voting
Yeah.
up here. So we'll make sure to get people up here.
The second question is, is a $669.50 Spear Street launch half, does that represent our reimbursement to the Star of Sagatuck for the launch, launch fee?
That's our, we got, that's our half.
So we only collected $1,400?
Yep, that's correct. Yep.
And launch fees.
And launch.
2023.
Yeah. We used to, used to be a lot more. We used to have a service that ran the boat back and forth and that's been gone. And so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, it's got smaller and smaller as time goes by.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Uh, introduction of ordinances, none unfinished biz. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's go ahead and take a roll call on that one.
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Why? Yes.
Sorry.
All right. Sorry. Sorry about that. I lost where we were. All right. Introduction of ordinances, none. Unfinished business, none. On to new business and it's 15A, page 33 in your packet, the audit presentation.
Mr. Peter's still here. Mr. Peter, if you want to recap what we talked about at the workshop?
Yeah, the audit, the, um, Ken was online with the audit and I mean, we went through it with everybody. So I don't know if anybody, nobody's really come forward since Wednesday. If anybody had any questions, had more time to digest it, but overall I think we're in great shape.
Does anybody have any questions for Peter at this point? I know we had time between the workshop and, uh, and tonight, uh, but does anybody have anything to add? Go ahead, Russ.
Yes, thank you. I would only ask that we have the audit presentation at an open workshop or at, pardon me, at an open council meeting. At the workshop, there's very low attendance. There's not much public representation nor is the media there. I think it's important to have that presentation at a council meeting.
Okay.
So just for future.
And I know we plan to, um, release a press release to the media as far as, um, the outcome of that audit. So, um, I know it was very positive and we thank you so much, Peter, for all you do.
No problem.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still looking at some things and I'll come to you personally with a couple of questions.
No problem. I'm here.
Just ten minutes. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. If there's nothing else, we are on to item 15B, page 34, the AT&amp;T lease. Go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So you had a lengthy discussion at your, uh, workshop, which is open to the public. Um, and you discussed a, a lot of the facts that went behind this project, uh, to date. And then so I, you know, I'm just going to open this up with a recommended motion, a sample motion, uh, what you have in front of you. Thank you, uh, Jamie, for putting this out. Uh, the recommended motion is to move to adopt the lease as presented, including at least amount of $2,150, uh, per month with an escalator of 1.5%. Uh, request staff to have AT&amp;T contribute $55,000 for improvements at existing restroom facilities near Mount Baldhead and revegetate the dunes near the Mount Baldhead staircase. Um, furthermore, authorize the mayor and the clerk to execute the lease subject to final staff, legal and engineering review.
All right. Do I have a motion? Go ahead, Gregory. It's right there. Yep. That would be the same one.
I had discussion point, not.
Oh, if we can have a motion first and then we'll discuss.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt the lease as presented, including a monthly lease amount of $2,150 with an annual escalator at 1.5%. Request staff to have AT&amp;T contribute $55,000 for improvements at existing restroom facilities near Mount Baldhead and revegetate the dunes near the Mount Baldhead staircase. Authorize the mayor and clerk to execute lease subject to final staff, legal and engineering review.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have the motion. We have a second. Now on to discussion.
Um, just a question. Um, when we talked about this, we talked about the painting as well of the dome. Uh, Ryan, you'd mentioned that, uh, you know, it's been a challenge for them. Of course, it's going to be a challenge for anyone, uh, to figure out how we can paint that. Um, but, um, I remember talking about that addition. Is that 55,000 that says just for restroom facilities? How about a little bit more money if we get needed for?
Good question, Mr. Muncy. And you're, you're correct. And so.
Not only, but real quick though, not only, you know, is, is it going to look prettier, but I just think that that fiberglass dome is so old, just that extra coat, I think will help keep it together a little bit better.
You, you are correct. So if, if the council, uh, would like to amend the, the motion, the motion to include painting of the dome, um, we could even add more money. I would say, uh, another 30,000.
Okay.
Um, so feel free to do so.
Okay. Do you have a minute to read my?
Um, we can continue to discuss and then, um, if we do want to amend that, we can do that. Um, any other discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'm a no on this. Um, only because the agreement that's in the packet is not complete. It's a red line version. I am not prepared to support a red line version of a contract of this importance.
Anyone else?
Similar lines. I appreciate this project and I'm excited about it, but it's hard for me to consider a, in, as stands incomplete contract.
Do you want to talk at all about the red line version of it? And, um, if there's any questions about some of those red line areas?
Yeah, I'm happy to do so. So the, the red line, I mean, the, the substantive lease terms are all there. Um, the, the lease agreement itself has not been finalized and formatted, but the language will essentially be the same, subject to the proposed motion language that, uh, the city manager was kind enough to share.
Yeah. Um, Madam, Madam Mayor, um, I deal with contracts a lot at work. We never by rule approve a red line version of a contract that is presented only for conversation and negotiation. For final sign off, it is a final version of it with all. In this case, this contract does have a lot of the comments still in it. So you're right, it's a working version and most of the terms are settled. However, there are blanks in this agreement. I would expect to see a fully completed documented agreement with the amounts that we're discussing this evening in that agreement. Um, this is, we don't know if AT&amp;T is going to agree to an $85,000 investment in this. And I'd like a breakdown of that. We have 30,000 for the painting of the dome. Uh, that may or may not be a good number, but of the 55,000, what of that? Was there any kind of a thought process? I know we discussed this at the workshop, um, in closed session. I don't recall an actual itemization of that 55,000. Um, but again, I, I'm not prepared to support red line version of a contract. It's just not good business.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
It does, the, the motion does stipulate that the authorize the mayor clerk to execute lease subject to final staff, legal and engineering review. I just wanted to comment.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's sufficient for me, Mayor.
Maybe we can change.
I, I trust you to sign a finalized and appropriate version with the appropriate review from council that will address things like Mr. Dykem's concerns. So I, I'm in favor of.
If we change the word at the end from review to approval, then it, you know, then legal and all of those people are actually approving it versus reviewing it. Um, and with that, I would be comfortable because I trust our, our staff and our legal counsel to, you know, I'm, I'm in the sub, I, I trust that the substance of it is here. So.
Hmm. I'm with, I'm with Holly on this.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you bringing that up. And, and I also, uh, Russ, and, uh, also I appreciate you bringing that up, Holly Anderson. I think, uh, the word approval makes a big difference.
Okay. Um, in, if there's no other discussion, are there any other discussion items? Go ahead, Logan.
I'm just really confused about how we're going to prove that's like not knowing whether AT&amp;T is going to agree to this $85,000. Cause that feels pretty substantial for the contract.
Well, if, if, if AT&amp;T, i- if that's the, the motion that the council makes and AT&amp;T doesn't accept it, then we'll be back here.
Yeah, I'll come back to you.
We're just recommending this to them.
Okay.
Hmm.
It, it would essentially be like a contingent approval, provided that AT&amp;T suggests or accepts whatever.
Right.
Yeah, they could be coming back to us.
Include here.
Yep.
Then, then.
I don't know. It doesn't feel like there's a need to produce right now. I'm, I don't know whether you're allowed a motion to table, but I feel like we shouldn't table this.
Yeah, we have a motion on this. We already have a motion to approve.
How does everybody else feel, Holly?
Let me, I'm processing still.
Yeah. Helen?
This doesn't feel complete enough for me to feel comfortable authorizing it.
Let's just call the question then.
Yeah, we can call the question. Um, I think it comes down to, we went into closed session where we talked about the numbers. Um, and that was our time to, you know, have a full discussion on that. Um, this is what we landed on. Um, and I feel that the question needs to be called and we can go ahead and take a vote on it at this point, but we do need to amend the motion.
Can, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
So Jake, in terms of, so if, you know, we fill in the amounts for the lease and all of that, if AT&amp;T has any changes to this, anything substantive, um, it would come back to us. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay.
At this point.
And is there anything in here that were, I mean, that you feel like there's wiggle room or could create any sort of issue come back to bite us?
Not at this time. No. I, I mean, the, the substantive terms, we, we pretty much come to an agreement with AT&amp;T about all of the language, except for just the dollar amounts that are.
Okay. And Mr. Dykem's question, anything or concerns, anything there, um, give you, can you provide any perspective on that?
Not necessarily. I mean, I, I don't know from, from my perspective, it, it didn't jump out as immediately concerning to me. And I will say that we also worked in conjunction with Steel in the Air, which is a consulting company who reviews thousands of these leases, and that wasn't a concern for them. Um, but that also is something probably that we can look at addressing with AT&amp;T, I think, removing just the phrase surrounding property. So it's only the city's development of the property that would be looked at from an interference standpoint. I don't even know that that would be, uh, like a, like a substantive change. It's a pretty minor edit in, in finalizing the document.
Maybe if it, yeah, that, that could be easier to find in what they consider an interference or, you know.
Yeah, I think, you know, from my pers- perspective is, is with that discussion with them and making sure we aren't, you know, hamstringing ourselves, then, um, I'm comfortable that our legal counsel and staff will exercise good judgment.
Yeah. I mean, the, the mayor and legal counsel have my confidence, along with the manager. I, I have complete confidence in them. I trust them to do the right thing here.
I believe in our staff too, but this contract isn't complete right now. And there's like a huge lark on this and it feels really weird to be approving this without knowing whether it's true or not. And I don't see the point of like getting it done now. It's, it's two weeks. Like it's not, it's not a crazy thing. I like this project and I want to see it happen. At the same time, like I would be embarrassed to like have this go through right now because I can't say that I know what's happening with this. Nobody does.
It sounds like we still have, um, you know, final staff, legal and engineering approval. So, um, I feel like there's still tweaks that can be made. So.
So I look forward to approving this when it's final.
Well, we have a, we're going to get an amendment.
You want a few amended?
Start again. Move to adopt lease as presented.
Do we have to remove the old one or she can just amend it?
Say a new motion.
Okay.
So let's just start with a new motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt the lease as presented, including a monthly lease amount of $2,150 with an annual escalator at 1.5%. Request staff to have AT&amp;T contribute $85,000 for improvements at existing restroom facilities and painting of the dome near Mount Baldhead and revegetate the dunes near the Baldhead, Mount Baldhead staircase. Authorize mayor and clerk to execute lease subject to final staff, legal and engineering approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And this is a roll call.
Yep.
Yep.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
No, with explanation.
No, with explanation. I am in support of this project, however.
Okay.
We don't do this for votes.
Next.
We don't get to have these, you can do it at council comments, council member.
Okay.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
No.
Motion carries.
All right. Onto item 15D, the temporary banner sign Village Square. That is on page 66.
Madam Mayor and City Council, so just before you tonight to get your approval from the Parks and Public, Parks and Public Works Committee's request to place a banner sign down at Village Square. As you heard from Mr. Herbert tonight, the playground is now gone, and they came up with a good idea to, to place a banner sign down there, letting folks know about the project that's ongoing, so.
Great. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the temporary banner sign in Village Square is presented until the playground equipment is installed.
Okay. Motion by Baldwin, second by Dean. Discussion. All right. This is also a voice vote. So all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Onto public comment on non-agenda items or any items you would like to discuss. Anyone in the room? Okay, go ahead.
Permission to be excused?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, don't leave now. I'm going to cite you in this conversation.
Unless you can tell me what the score is.
But two seconds before you depart, I think council here, and with all respect to Parks and Rec, which is kind of new.
Are you starting your public?
I am.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dave Smith, 101 Main Street in Sagatuck. Burkeholdts, 101 Main Street, Sagatuck. And Mr. Dean knows something about geospatial and geotechnical work. We're missing the boat here, folks. Mount Baldhead is sliding into, the dune is literally sliding into the Kalamazoo River and going the backside. I was the spearhead of the Holiday Star on Mount Baldhead. Can you believe it, about 12 years ago now? We brought my father up there, who has bad knees. So we brought him up with the equipment truck, and he's very much a local and a native. And he was beyond furious of the erosion 12 years ago up there. We're losing the building, and AT&amp;T won't have a tower in another few years. And that's incredibly great national history up there as well. So back to the AT&amp;T contract. One, we haven't defined, we got to save the dune first, folks. The Nature Conservancy created that massive erosion that is taking the stairs with it as well. My mother was very active in getting the stairs approved for reconstruction. How many years ago now, Russ?
15.
Yeah. So those stairs were new, and the entire observation deck is now leaving us as well. And we're getting excited about a nice shiny object, but we're not fixing the house to begin with, which is a national landmark. Also liaison with AT&amp;T as far as engineering and construction. Know a little bit about that stuff. They now want to put all that stuff as a footprint on top of that dune with heavy equipment. I know they're going to use some helicoils. For those of you familiar with construction, that's not a bad thing. However, that's a major change to the footprint to a very historic dune. And I have a feeling my mother would probably be weighing in on this discussion right now. Not against AT&amp;T. However, there's other spots in this community where a monopole could be presented. We have monopoles all up and down the lake shore. I drive ships and tugboats for a living. I go up and down Lake Michigan along this shoreline all the time. And I have to go out of my way to find the DeVos and Van Andel properties in Laketown. But you will see cell towers very well hidden. And with AT&amp;T precluding other towers in the area, including the Water Tower property, which the city owns, we have access with high voltage power. We have city right of ways. We have access to fiber optics. We have fiber all over town now. We should be discussing that as well. And if the city wanted to put a monopole for T-Mobile or Verizon, and Bob Sapita, who's on the preservation committee for the radar tower, he cited over $100,000 a year in revenue in a community on the east side of the state, and they own the tower. So I think we need to be having a discussion here, especially with the preservation of that dune. Let's save the stairs. Let's save the dune before we rush into thing. And Mr. Muncy, there are water towers all over this country that are painted all day, every day. So painting is not a problem.
All right, your time is up. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Anyone online? Is there anyone online? All right. We do have correspondence on page 67, 69, if you've had a chance to read that. Onto council comments. Logan, if you'd like to start.
Congratulations to Judge Bellargian. He runs a veterans treatment court, and it's called the West Michigan Regional Veterans Treatment Court. And they just celebrated their 50th graduate from that program. He established that 10 years ago. It's like, cause it's very important to me as well. I know that a lot of veterans have trouble reacclimating to society after they're done serving our country. And it's, it's just really exciting to see the work that he's doing. And I want to congratulate him and his team on that.
Gregory?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Burkeholdts for letting us know about the erosion problem. I know that it was eroding, and I had no idea it was in such a critical position. I don't think most people here knew that, in this town, knew that it was so critical. Why so late in the game? You know, is what I was wondering, you know? We've talked about this for about two years now. But boy, that sure is an eye-opener for me. And I certainly be looking at, you know, that erosion. And we're, and I hope that you reach out to us and give us some information about how you found that out. You know, living here for 20 years, I, I don't, I haven't seen much of that, you know?
Sorry, Mr. Muncy. We got somebody in.
Is there somebody in the audience that has this phone? Okay, go ahead. You can finish, Gregory. I'm sorry.
But I, I really appreciate that because it makes me look at this a lot differently. And I wish I would have had that information. However, I also want to point out, I spent a lot of time looking at this contract, and I did see the red lines in the comments. Other than what we discussed here, and what we discussed on Wednesday with, with the contract as it is, with those red lines corrected with what we have, I felt comfortable with our staff and with our engineer to follow through with this. And again, $85,000 from AT&amp;T, that's a lot less than if they were to build new bathrooms. So I don't see why they'd say no to that. Oh, and also.
Sorry.
I understand AT&amp;T, and we have as a city, I think, have looked into what it would take to paint that dome. And I think it is a little challenge for us to find that around here.
Okay. Helen?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Russ?
Yeah, thank you. And again, I'm a Michigan fan too. I want to see the game, so I'm not purposely delaying this meeting, but I have comments. I did talk with the mayor today. We are coming into that period where it's time for the city manager evaluation. I did, I've asked that we put this onto a workshop, our next workshop, to discuss the process so we can all, as a council, understand how that process is going to work. And I understand from my conversation with the mayor, she's already had a conversation with the city manager about the process. I think in order for transparency, we should be discussing that at a workshop in terms of what our part of the process is going to look like. Two is the airport property, future plan. It got me thinking again, after having seen these blazes out in the, out at that property, that we still need to be talking about what our future plans look like for that property. There is no safe presumption that this is going to be for public use. It very well could be an asset that the city should sell. We just don't know what the value of it is. And that's a process that the city absolutely should be going through before any further work or discussion of that property is taking place. We just don't know what the value of it is and what the best use is for the community. I'm not saying it should be sold. I'm not saying it should be used for public use. It should be open as a park. I'm just saying we haven't gone through that process to evaluate it. Three is the December 22 Strategic Workshop Report. Thank you, manager Heist for forwarding it, or 23, excuse me, forwarding that to us. You did say in the email that this is good information for the staff to discuss. Would, at some point, appreciate understanding how that's going to be brought to staff and how it'll be brought back to council for our planning as well. I would also ask on a workshop agenda, pretty shortly, is that we also review current city boards and committees. If you look through our website, we have a number of committees on that website,[1616.16]